Welcome to Rainier Avenue Radio. This is our regular broadcast of the impacts of the coronavirus on South Seattle and surrounding communities that we have been doing since March 13th. On the show today, we're going to take a look at surrounding communities. Joining us on the program will be Jason White, City Councilmember, Councilmember from Yakima. Then also John Gilbreath will be joining us from Earshot Jazz in the Earshot Jazz Festival, which took place last year in what 60 different locations or more than that in 60 days or something, 30 days, just a phenomenal world renowned jazz festival. What's going to happen with that this year? And what's going on with Earshot Jazz during COVID-19 and the pandemic? We'll find out from John Gilbreath, the Executive Director. And then joining us will be Cliff Cawthon. That may name, that name may sound familiar. He hosts a show right here called Politics Off The Cuff, which airs live every Thursday at 3:30 right here on Rainier Avenue Radio. And it is exactly what it says. It is Politics Off The Cuppy cuff. He calls himself your friendly neighborhood agitator. And then joining us will be the Mayor of Bremerton, Mayor Patricia Byers will be joining us right here on Rainier Avenue Radio again to talk about what's going on in Yakima. Welcome again to our broadcast of Rainier Avenue Radio's Coronavirus Impact Special Shows. We've been talking to people from the community, talking from individuals, talking to educators, talking to business owners, talking to business institutions, talking to health experts, and most of all, sharing the narrative from our community during this pandemic. And right now, I believe I have on the line with me, not yet, but joining us very shortly, and I'm sure Daniel will let me know that Jason White will be joining us here. After calling on constituents, and this is in regards to Councilmember White, after calling on constituents to rise up and resist state and federal social distancing guidelines geared towards stemming the spread of the coronavirus, City Councilmember in Yakima, Jason is facing the possibility of a recall, which remove him from office. A flurry of social media posts by Jason White encouraged residents who have strong immune systems and are asymptomatic to go back to work. White's message, which dismisses health experts who warn healthier people could spread COVID-19 to higher risk friends, coworkers, family members, et cetera. Channels of concern felt across the country about the threat of the economic ruin caused by long-term shutdowns. Councilmember White says that he is calling on all of the Yakima people who say they support him to get back to work. Make stuff happen. Stuff wasn't the word that he used, but I think you get the message. Not that old job that is dead and gone, most likely. Take off your masks, be healthy, and take back your own lives. Stop living in fear is what he was posted on his personal Facebook page earlier this month. We are still waiting for Councilmember White to join us. Via Zoom. And you know what, Mr. Bellis, let's take a really quick commercial break. And let's make sure that we can make this happen, just in case there's some technical issues.
This is Paul Pearson, host of Star Time. And when I'm not being reprimanded by traffic cops, I'm listening to RainierAvenueRadio.world.
The Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle, empowering communities and changing lives. The Urban League has been there to serve when our community is at its lowest. It's never mattered what the crisis was. The systemic oppression remains constant for those most vulnerable. Here at the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle, we'll be temporarily adjusting our hours of operation and available services. If you are in need of resources, we recommend that you give us a call at 206-461-3792. To make an appointment, press zero and speak with the receptionist. Walk-in hours will be from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. Monday through Friday. And hey, we'll gladly work with you via phone as best as we can if you're exhibiting any signs of illness to assist you with information to save your home, find you a place to sleep, or connect you to job opportunities. The Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle. That's Join Rainier Avenue Radio from 5 to midnight for Sunday evening sound sessions. Jazz from the cabinets from Big Poppy.
That's right. It's time once again. Jazz from the cabinets with Big Poppy.
Sergio LaCora's Love Lines.
It's Sergio's Love Lines with Sergio LaCora. Go onto the phone line, tell her who we talking to.
Sage Prince, Just My Opinion.
This is Sage, and that's just about gonna do it for the first half of Just My Opinion.
K-Fox Nightbeat with Nasty Ness Rodriguez.
The beat of the Fox. K-Fox Nightbeat, Nasty Ness.
You know what? You're gonna listen from 5 to midnight. Just turn it on and don't stop. DJ Alibaba.
Star Time with Paul Pearson.
Thanks for tuning in. My name is Paul Pearson, and this is Star Time.
Sunday evening sound sessions on Rainier Avenue Radio. Trust me, you'll be listening the entire time from 5 to midnight. Sunday evening, your sound session on Rainier Avenue Radio.
What up y'all? DJ Dirty Harry hanging out with my guys at RainierAvenueRadio.world. Check them out.
This is Paul Pearson, host of Star Time. And when I'm not shouting "Badiyah" at city council meetings, I'm listening to RainierAvenueRadio.world.
This is Paul Schneiderman, the host of Sports and Stuff on Rainier Avenue Radio. Sports and Stuff is a sports show that focuses on the game day aspects of sports and also the business policy, legal, and sociological aspects of sports. Tune into Sports and Stuff and listen to my interviews with athletes, authors, administrators, politicians, and others.
Wash your hands. Don't touch your face. Wipe things down. Clean up your space. When you cough and sneeze, do responsibly. If you feel you're getting ill, isolate at home and chill. No, you're not alone. Please pick up your phone and call 206-477-3977. Can't count it. 206-477-3977. Public Health. 206-477-3977. Can't count it. 206-477-3977. Public Health. Community radio station will provide you with more information. Say Rainier Avenue Radio. Your community radio station will provide you with more information. Rainier Avenue Radio.
This is the news on Rainier Avenue Radio. More than two thirds of people surveyed in 20 African countries said they would run out of food or water if they stayed at home for 14 days. Just over half of the respondents said they would run out of money. BBC News says that the African Centers for Disease Control and Prevention research was conducted to help governments map out future policies on how to tackle the coronavirus. It warns that if measures are not adapted to local needs, there's a risk of unrest and violence. The lowest income households expected to run out of food and money in less than a week. In Nigeria and Kenya, social media users noted that hunger in urban areas was forcing them to violate stay-at-home orders. The researchers have recommended that governments need to communicate more effectively with their citizens and properly inform them about the reasons behind the measures that are being taken. And that's your news on Rainier Avenue Radio.
Hello?
We are back on Rainier Avenue Radio. Joining me is Yakima City Councilmember Jason White. How are you doing, sir?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Under the circumstances, fantastic. Thank you for joining us. Rainier Avenue Radio, South Seattle's community radio station. We've been covering the coronavirus pandemic and certainly want to hear all of the voices and how this is impacting everyone. Councilmember, I made a statement and I just want to make sure you knew what I said prior to you joining us, which was I'm calling on all of the folks of Yakima who say they support me to get back to work and make stuff happen. Stuff was not the word for yourself. Not that old job. Take off your mask, be healthy, and take back your own lives. Stop living in fear. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Well, let's talk about that. First, as a city council member, how from your perspective is the coronavirus pandemic impacting a couple, in a couple of areas? Individuals in Yakima, the way the city is functioning as a government, and then small businesses?
How is it affecting everybody?
Yes.
Well, small businesses are definitely struggling. They're the ones that are being hit hardest by financially. Government, we basically don't have any council meetings. We're not able to hold open public council meetings right now. So there's no public input. We're changing policy without receiving any kind of public input. And overall, people, I think that people are have had enough with, you know, that was about, I think that was April 6th, I posted that, what you read. But overall, I think people have had enough with being locked down for something that's not really affecting medically like we were told it was going to affect us medically.
And let's talk about the impact on small businesses in Yakima. Again, we're broadcasting here in the interest of South Seattle. What we found out when we started this broadcast was that a lot of the things that were impacting small businesses and individuals and educators in South Seattle were impacting other communities. And so we began to make the connection with other places and surrounding communities. As a radio station, we actually were in Yakima the first week in March broadcasting the 1A basketball tournament from the Yakima Sun Dome. And I think that we left, I believe, on the 7th. Had a conversation with Mayor Byers a week or two after that, or a little short time after that, and things had not quite gotten to Yakima yet. As it stands now, at least from the information that I have, Yakima per capita is one of the highest places that has been impacted by the COVID-19 virus. For businesses, what's going on with businesses in Yakima?
What's going on with businesses?
What's going on with businesses? What's happening? Businesses shut down? What are the, what are the business owners saying? What is the general attitude?
Well, there's, there's definitely a big movement to reopen Yakima. You know, our neighboring city, Seela, just wrote a, it's a small city. It's right outside the city limits. And it's kind of like a suburb of Yakima. And they just, they, their mayor and their city council just wrote a proclamation saying that they would not abide by the stay-at-home orders and people can go back to work and they wouldn't be using any city resources to, to basically comply with the governor's stay-at-home orders and back-to-work plans that people can make up their own decisions. Here in Yakima, the council has not taken that stance. I'm the only one that's taken that stance publicly so far. Well, another council member was leaning that she didn't like some of the stipulations that we, that the council agreed to on the last letter, supporting the governor's orders. But there's a, there's definitely a growing population that's ready to get back to work, especially the small business owners, because they're, they're about to lose it all. There's been several businesses that have closed permanently. And I think that that's the longer way to get them back to work, the more businesses that we're going to lose permanently. So yeah, it's been real hard on people financially to, to see people, I know that small business owners put their whole life into it, myself included. I was, I have a company, Yakima Reclaim, that builds, that does custom design work for, for bars and restaurants. And when this hit, we had four bars that we were working on building out, doing all the design work for them. So that literally shut us down from being able to work. So I had to go back into Instacartons out there delivering groceries now.
And again, I have information that says several hundred people gathered on May 1st in the lawn near the county courthouse to call for the easing of stay-at-home restrictions that were imposed by Governor Jay Inslee. And then days later after that, there was a rebellion of a different sort that unfolded with some 50 men and women walked off the job at an apple packing plant in Yakima citing scarcity of masks and placards that were crafted from cardboard buckets calling for hazard pay as they labor through the pandemic. This thing is obviously impacting folks in different ways. Folks say that we're in the same boat and that we're all in this together, but there are a lot of differences of opinion. For you, when you call for folks to not wear masks, go back to work.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm saying, can you hear me now?
No.
I'm saying that when you call for folks to.
I can't hear you right now. I can't really hear you for some reason.
Okay.
I don't know what the complication is here.
You, let me know if you can hear me now. I want to make sure that, are you still unable to hear me?
Okay. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
No, for some reason, it's like, I don't know why I can't hear you.
Okay. I want to make sure that you can hear me. You know, would it be possible for us? I'm not sure. I can hear you clearly on this end. Would it be possible for us to try this over the phone?
Let me see if there's something media. Wait, ringtone. Okay. All right. Can you speak again?
Okay, let's see if we've got you now, Councilmember White. Are you there? Still having some difficulties getting Councilmember White connected here. Do you want to, to try and do this by phone? I can connect you via phone if that will help you hear me.
What's that? Let me see here. Because sometimes it's.
I'm going to, I'm going to try and connect with you via phone. I don't know if you sense sounds like you can hear me a little bit.
Microphone is muted.
And Daniel, I'm gonna do phone call.
Hello?
Hello, Councilmember White. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Off. There we go.
Okay, I don't know when you were, when you, when, when the communication stopped. I'll just kind of repeat what I said, that there were on May 1st, several hundred people who gathered on the lawn near the county courthouse to call for the easing of stay-at-home restrictions imposed by Governor Inslee in Yakima. And then a few days later, there was a rebellion of a different sort that unfolded where about 50 folks walked off the job at an apple packing plant north of Yakima. They cited scarcity of masks and were calling for hazard play, pay as they labored through the pandemic. One of the things that's been said is that we're all in this together, but there are a number of different opinions about the way we should handle this. And so for you, when you're calling for folks to take off their masks and get back to work, do you feel that that flies in the face of what the experts are telling us, the health experts are telling us, and the potential risk that this may put community members at?
No, there's, there's several health experts, including the Surgeon General, that says that they're not necessary and that healthy people should not be wearing them. There's several experts that agree with what I'm saying. It's just that, first, you know, if the CDC was even against it at first, and then they, then they told everybody to wear it. So there's several medical experts. I mean, the Surgeon General's saying it. I'm not the only one saying it. You know, it's not, it's not the common recommendation right now, but that's because, you know, that certain, certain medical experts are saying that. I don't see why we should blindly listen to them and not listen to the other one.
And for folks, for folks to go back to work, especially in certain circumstances, this may increase the exposure. And I have heard, we've been, we've kind of gone back and forth on the whole issue of masks. There were initially folks saying that you didn't need them. I don't know if that was due because there was a scarcity of masks. We wanted them for our medical professionals. Now they're saying, wear masks. It won't prevent you from getting the coronavirus, but it will prevent you from sharing it by wearing your mask. But without the mask, and with folks being very close to other, in close proximity, in restaurants, et cetera, how do you see this impacting the, the burden on the health community in Yakima?
On the, the burden on the health department?
Yeah. Do you, do you see this resulting in an increase of infection, of spreading the disease if we were to open up? Or do you feel that though, there will be no dramatic change? Or at this point, do you feel like, well, that's just what's going to have to happen as a society? We have to make tough decisions?
I mean, if you look at all these states and counties and everywhere else, their rates are lower than the closed counties. You know, like that's just factual information. I mean, you take Florida, Florida versus New York, and the infection rates are astronomical in New York, which is on extreme lockdown. And Florida is incredibly low and they're, they're open. So no, I don't think that, I think that for one, people should be able to make their own decisions because we live in America and there's liberties that people have. And they need to be able to be free. I mean, be free to make their own decisions. People that are sick and have compromised immune systems should take extra precautions and keep themselves safe. But that doesn't affect the rest of us. You know, there's only been, there's only been three deaths associated with COVID-19 in Yakima County for people under the age of 50. Three associated with it. And I know for one, that all four deaths that I know of personally, people that I know that, that they, that have been classified as COVID-19 deaths are not COVID-19 deaths. They were very, very sick individuals with lung cancer and brain cancer and, you know, that they were just, they were rough. They were already on their way out and they labeled it as a COVID-19 death. So I think that transparency is incredibly important right now. So people actually know the real death rate, what's really happening. You know, getting a sickness, we can't shut down the economy because of a, of a, of somebody getting sick, because the chances of somebody healthy dying from it are insanely low. You know, so I mean, getting it is inevitable. But I think that we need to be promoting health and immune systems. That's something that's not very, it's not really talked about in mainstream. Never once has the CDC or anybody else told you to get healthy and build your immune system and take, you know, get your vitamin D and your vitamin C. But they know that to be the case to, you know, that that information's coming out every day that nobody that's getting this has above-normal vitamin D levels, or vitamin C levels for that matter. So that needs to be promoted and talked about. Taking care of your health and getting your vitamin C and vitamin D.
You're listening to RainierAvenueRadio.world. This is our special coronavirus and the impacts of the coronavirus pandemic on Seattle, South Seattle and surrounding areas. My guest joining me is Jason White, Councilmember from Yakima. Councilmember White, we have information now that says Yakima is essentially a hotspot per capita in the spreading of the coronavirus. Again, we have folks at a plant who staged a walkout because they are fearing for their lives and the fact that you have folks who live in generational housing. So someone whose immune system may be stronger, could come home or impact someone whose immune system is weaker. And what would you say to folks who say that at this point, you're, you're putting economy over lives?
That's just simply not true. The people that are, that are being affected by this are, you know, there's, like I said, there's been three deaths for people under the age of 50 in our entire county. But everybody else that has died from this supposedly is, are incredibly sick and they probably didn't even die from it to begin with. I think there's been 67 deaths attributed to COVID. And I know four of those people personally, and they did not have COVID. They actually tested negative and they still labeled their death as COVID. So the sensationalism that the media is pumping out there, the mainstream media, and these false numbers and reporting and spinning this is what's really the harm to everybody. It's not putting life over, 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 over the economy because the economy, without the economy and people working, they're not going to have anything. Like people have to work to survive. There's just no, there's no way around that. You have to get some vital things done and you have to be able to take care of yourselves. And part of that is going out and work. And if you don't want to go back to your, your job and you don't feel comfortable doing it, you got to find another way to, to survive right now. But, you know, I mean, as far as the walkouts and stuff like that, I mean, if that's what they feel like they need, then it seems like they're banding together to do that. I was at one of the rally or one of the walkouts two days ago, and I went live there and talking to some of the people and seeing what their demands were and seeing what some of the things that they needed. And if people feel like they need masks, then they should wear a mask and, and use hand sanitizer and, and that kind of thing. But if the argument is that their live is worth $2 more an hour, that's not a very good argument. I think that the argument, I mean, if they're going to be there, that they're, if they're really think that they're in a hazard, then I don't know, my life wouldn't be worth $2 an hour, that's for sure.
Councilmember White, in regards to what I mentioned about Yakima now being a hotspot per capita with the spread of the coronavirus, is that something, what do you think about that? Do you think that's false reporting, fake news with the spread of coronavirus now in Yakima? Do you think that this would call for a more stringent tightening situation? What are your thoughts about that?
My thoughts are that this conversation went from deaths to people getting the, people getting the sickness. So I mean, like, I mean, we can't, we can't shut down the world because people are getting sick. Like deaths are one thing. That's what we shut down the economy for was for deaths, because everyone was going to die and everybody, the hospitals were going to be overrun. But that's not the case. Nobody's dying. Not that many people are dying from it. It's not, it's not as lethal as they made it out to be. So those, that information, yes, the, the number of cases, I don't think is, there's a number of people testing positive for it. I, as far as I know, that's real information. That's accurate information. And the percentage per capita, yes, that we're getting more positive cases, but that should be expected for the type of work that we have here and the demographics we do have here. We have a lot of warehouse workers, a lot of warehouse, we take agriculture culture city. So yeah, having people in tight quarters and working together all day. And we also have a, a large retired population, so a lot of older people here too. So, and a lot of unhealthy. I think we're the third most unhealthy city in the, the third fattest city in the United States. So those three factors are definitely going to put us at risk. Or put a lot of the population at the higher, or, or make it easier for them to get it and spread it. But that, that wasn't the issue. The issue was deaths. The issue was people dying and people are not, healthy people are not dying from it. And I question the number of people that, that have been attributed to COVID-19. I don't think it's nearly as high. I think it's minimal, very minimal if you take the real deaths, just like they did in San Diego. They took, they said the number was 167, but now they've come back and changed that to eight. Eight people from 167 are the real numbers in San Diego. So I think that the numbers would be similar here in Yakima. We'd go from 67 down to just a few. It'd be four, three, or four deaths from people actually dying from COVID-19 instead of them thinking they have it and labeling the death as COVID-19.
Councilmember White, I'm certainly glad that you come on to share your narrative and in no attempt to censor you. I will say to you that I'm not switching the conversation from a death to one about illness. I'm just asking the questions that are of concern to people. And there is a wide array of questions that are of concern to people. We got started a little late here due to some difficulties, but I want to give you an opportunity here to share some final words with our audience. And one of the things that I would like you to address before doing that is there's been some, I guess, a movement to have you censored for some of your commentary. A, what do you think about that? And then B, I want to give you the opportunity for final words here. Anything that you'd like to say to our listening audience?
Yeah, I was, well, I have been censored by the council for, for supporting basically pro, you know, pro, it's, I supported a ban. They called it an anti-transgender ban or transgender athletes not being able to compete with the opposite sex. And I supported that, that legislation. And then the, the leader of the LGBTQ community here said that I should step down, which was, she was also an opponent for my seat that's coming up next year. She's already declared, declared her candidacy to run against me next year. And then she, she used her, her platform with the, as a president of the LGBTQ community to say that I should resign for supporting that legislation. And so I said that she was an idiot. And so they, they, they said that, I specifically said Christina Ortega is an idiot. I said nothing. I said, I support everybody, everybody's choice to identify however they please to support transgenders, support them doing that. But they, there's a difference between supporting transgender and then allowing transgender athletes to compete against like the female. That's what my case was. I said that I do not support that one aspect of it, that transgender males or people transitioning should compete against that because it's unfair. And so, and then they, they, they tried to say that it was, you know, hateful and bigoted and that it was inciting, inciting hate and all this stuff. And the council is very sensitive like that and they, they think that they could take away my freedom of speech, try to censor my freedom of speech and the people that I, that I represent's freedom of speech. Because if I'm their voice and they think that, I guess their, their, their perspective is if their feelings get hurt, they should be able to take away your rights. You know, and that's, I don't agree with that philosophy whatsoever. And I think that people, you know, a lot of people have, since I've been censored, have reached out and appreciated me taking stances on issues and you know, saying my voice, you know, speaking my opinion candidly. And that it's given them some, some hope that there's somebody in city government that they actually agree with. There's a lot of people that, that don't agree with the, the rest of the council stance. I mean, it might even be the majority of Yakima that's agreeing with it.
Councilmember White, I'm, I'm almost out of time here, but I do also want to give you an opportunity to address our listening audience on your thoughts of COVID-19 and what you think should happen. And just again, your, your narrative here, I got about 45 seconds left, but I want to give you the opportunity to share your thoughts with our audience.
People need to take
Hello?
Sorry, yeah. People need to take care of their health, number one. You know, look into supplementing, look into getting some sun, getting out there, taking their lives back. Don't be, I say, don't succumb, don't let government take away your freedoms. Government is here to protect your rights, not to take them away, and that's what government is trying to do right now. A lot of, a lot of state governments are trying to do that. I think that people need to stand up for their liberties or else they're going to get taken away. I've been doing this for two and a half years now and if they have their way, they're going to keep taking them away. Like I'm glad that this has actually been brought to light so people can actually see how many of their rights are being taken away on a daily basis. Because that's generally what happens almost every council meeting. One of, one of your rights, one of people's rights are being taken away on a, on a regular basis. And they think they can control your life in every single way and everything that you do. And I don't stand for that. I think a lot of people do. And I think that me standing up for and saying it allows people to have their voice back and to not be disenfranchised with politics and actually get involved with it. And that's my goal is to get people involved and to start listening and to take action.
Well, all right, Councilmember White, I do appreciate you joining us and thank you for sharing the narrative as we listen to what's happening not only around South Seattle and surrounding communities, but over in Eastern Washington as well. And thank you for joining us on Rainier Avenue Radio. And know that at this platform, we engage in open, honest conversation and you are always welcome to share your narrative here on Rainier Avenue Radio.
Thank you.
All right, we'll be back with the conversation from John Gilbreth of the Earshot Jazz Festival, right after this.
This is Paul Pearson, host of Star Time. And when I'm not busy tearing the roof off the suckers, I'm listening to Rainier Avenue Radio dot world.
Don't spread COVID-19. If you're a young adult and you get the coronavirus, you might be okay. You may not even have symptoms, but if you give it to your grandmother, who gives it to your grandfather, before you know it, you can wipe out a whole generation. When it comes to the coronavirus, you have to think about who you might infect. So practice social distancing, avoid crowds, wash your hands. And if you have the option to stay home, just stay home. Do your part and help limit the spread of COVID-19. This message is a public service of Rainier Avenue Radio dot world.
The news on Rainier Avenue Radio dot world, your community resource for current information.
Hey, this is Kendra. Join me in the Rainier Avenue Radio News Team Mondays at 6:00 PM and Wednesdays at 6:30 PM.
Your community radio station, your community news. Get current, updated information. Look, we just tell you what's going on. You decide for yourself. Live news on Rainier Avenue Radio dot world, your source for information. Anchored by Kendra Leon, the news on Rainier Avenue Radio dot world. Six o'clock on Mondays, 6:30 on Wednesdays, your local community radio station, Rainier Avenue Radio.